Okay, a couple of housekeeping items. We've got a very busy night tonight in order to get these two articles done in time for the, uh, the special town meeting on the 27th. The reason that we're doing this so quickly is, one, is the grant that the sheriff is going to talk to us about expires and October. And the other one is the fire truck was added on after we decided to do the special town meeting because they finally had enough information to bring it forward. So what's gonna happen tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing. The person that's here for the sheriff, when the sheriff is done, the questions about the sheriff will definitely be over, then we'll move on to the fire truck. As soon as we're done with those questions, the Warren and Finance will then open their meeting, and they will make their recommendations. As soon as the Warren and Finance committee is done, the selectmen will open their regular selectmen's meeting, and then we will vote to make our recommendations on these questions. Okay? So the questions that we're gonna be thinking about right now, other than to choose a moderator for me, Article 2, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a four-year contract with the York County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement services. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from undesigned funds a sum not to exceed a sum of $20,000 for contract services with the York County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement services to be in conjunction with the town of Chapley. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from undesigned funds a sum not to exceed a sum of $40,000 for contract services with the York County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement services. And that is if the county of Chapley decides not to move in with us, then would you like to do it anyways? So, Sheriff?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Morris Milek, the sheriff here in Long County. As I told the folks in Chapley the other night, there are only two people that call me Morris, that's my mother, my wife, which she's extremely upset. So everybody else calls me Moe, and, uh, you can certainly, uh, exactly do that. Community-oriented policing service, heckman is cops. This is a federal funded program that was started quite a few years ago by the federal government to allow law enforcement agencies to supplement their patrol services to the communities in which they patrol. This particular grant is a little bit different, some of the, uh, some of the stipulations to it are a little bit different. Should we go with this particular grant? One of the stipulations, if we hire someone new from outside, that person has to be a veteran. Uh, this is part of what the government's doing to try to help our vets that have been all over Iraq, and Afghanistan, and where else than maybe the Middle Surla country, this kind of gives them a little quicker or bigger step through the war system. The officer that would be chosen would have to have been with the military as of 9/11/2001, and has to have served at least 18 months of full-time service to the country, in whatever branch of the military he or she had been in. Also, by the contract that we've had, if the town decides to do this particular program, the person that you would get as a deputy would be a full-time criminal justice academy certified policeman. In other words, you wouldn't, uh, you wouldn't be getting somebody fresh off the street that had never done this before. That person, he or she, would be a certified private policeman. So, having said that, what we, what a police agency does is apply for these particular grants.
And the awards are done, uh, as far as, uh, through need, uh, some of the accomplishment that the agency has done, and also, uh, what your Part 1 crimes look like. And Part 1 crimes are those cases that have been reported to us, and those cases that have been cleared by us, by arrest, basically assaults, burglaries, thefts, whatever it may be. When we apply for grants, uh, there's a whole host of questions that they ask us, and I'm proud to say that the York County Sheriff's Office has the highest clearance rate of Part 1 crimes in the state for sheriff's departments. So that helped us. The number of calls and the geographical area that we have, and the amount of people that we serve helped us, and the fact that we are very much understaffed also helped us. So, I applied for the grant and was awarded two positions. Um, it's a very, uh, long and thorough, uh, process. At the end of the day, there were five police agencies in the state of Maine that got grants. Four of them were local departments that got one person apiece, and my agency, they'd got two grants. Last Saturday morning, the town of Parsonsville had their town meeting and voted to, uh, to go with this particular program, and we'll be working with the selectmen with the contract on that in a couple of months or so. We'll be up and running in the town of Parsonsville. And here I am tonight, talking to you basically about how this particular program works. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background, how it goes. I could have, I could have written the grant and gotten the grant and mixed and matched and took that person and put it, uh, put that person within the whole realm of our schedule. But community-oriented policing is just that. It's, it's a situation where we bring a person into a town, and we work with the town to address the town's needs. Uh, and how does that work? Well, basically, um, the contract obviously is between the sheriff's office and the town. The selectmen are involved in the actual oral board and the hiring of that particular person. I highly recommend, if you choose to do this, that the selectmen choose a public safety committee, because what we need to do and what we want to do in a case like this is we need your help, we need your eyes and ears, uh, to let us know what are the needs here in the town of Acton. Some, some issues are larger than others, but some issues are more, I call them pain in the back end type situations, but sometimes with a dedicated officer, just one or two little things that that officer can do makes that particular problem go away. The other situation that you end up with is, uh, people have asked, people always ask, and I might as well let you know right up front, you know, what's the schedule going to be? And the answer to that is, the schedule's going to be when we need and when we feel, and when I say "we," the town and the department, feel that we need that particular officer on. Because it would not make any sense whatsoever to hire an individual and say have him work , uh, 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, and then the bad guys say, okay, you know, he's not around anymore, now we can go to Acton and do whatever we want to do. The idea is, is to keep everybody guessing. The idea is, is to schedule that officer when that officer's time is needed the most in the town, and that's what it's all about. Community-oriented policing, and I gave an example the other night in Chapley, and I'd like to share that same thing with you folks tonight. We, uh, we had one of our contract deputies obtain some information from sources that, uh, that he'd been talking with for many, many, many months about a series of burglaries that had happened in a town here in York County. So, after 9 o'clock one morning, he called over to the detectives at the office and said, have we received any calls of burglaries, uh, down in the Arrowhead area? And we had not, and he said, well, you better send somebody over there, there are a whole host of residences that have been broken into over there. So, we did, and, uh, we responded down there, located a, uh, amount of residences that had been broken into, continued working with the contract, talking with different people that he knew, followed up on evidence that we had. By 1:00 in the afternoon, we were on the telephone with the folks at, who were at work, whose houses had been broken into, and basically telling them, uh, the bad news is, your house got broken into this morning after you left for work. The good news is, we have someone in custody and your TV set is sitting here, and we'll meet you at your house when you, when you get off work tonight. So, that's how community policing works. The officer that works in that community gets to know the community, that officer is, is charged with talking with people. One of my favorite things that I always tell my officers, whether they're contract deputies or just general patrol deputies, you know, if there's a Little League game going on tonight, and his calls are caught up for the time being, um, I encourage my officers to stop at the Little League game, watch an inning or two, talk to mom and dad, talk to Graham and Grant, because that's how you, you get a forecast, and that's how you get a feeling on what's going on in town, and that's how you become approachable from the towns' folks to make sure that, that we do the job that you expect us to do. The other thing that happens, um, with community-oriented policing, currently, because of a lack of manpower, um, we, uh, for several years now have broken the county up into three zones that generally have five to six towns in each zone, and I handle two-thirds of those every month, and the state police handle one-third of them every month, and then at the end of that month, we rotate, they leave, we come in, we work for a month, we leave, they come in. That type of policing is a reactionary type thing, because quite frankly, all we're doing is answering calls for incidences that have happened and were responding to something that's already happened. That goes totally against the grain of what community policing is, and that's being proactive in a community and fixing a situation. It may, it may not always be sitting on the side of the road running a radar machine, it may be a situation where the deputy sees an, an issue going on, or the selectmen see something, or someone in town talks with the public safety committee, whatever it might be, that officer is, is gonna strive to take care of that situation. It may be, you know, a call to the road commissioner to have something done, it may be a call to the fire department to have something done, or whatever it may be, but that officer is there to take care of the issue in town that's, that's, uh, significant to this particular town. So, what we have done, uh, with those towns that have contract deputies, the 40 hours a week, what we have done is we supplement, when that officer is on his days off, we bring an officer in and cover the, cover the zone itself, cover the, the town itself. Because what we can do with that, the pass-on and the electronics that we have in our computers today, if that contract deputy is working on a certain thing, and he ends up going home, everything that he does is available to all our deputies, so the deputy that would be covering up here would continue working on whatever it might be, if there's a, if there's an incident going on, or if there's, whatever it may be, if there's a parade, or, or whatever the town has going on that needs a little bit of special police attention, that's what the contract deputy does, and if he ends up having to leave, then somebody else will step in. So, if, if the town were interested and decided they wanted to do this, uh, we would change the way the town of Acton is covered, we would end up covering the town 24/7/365. Mention to you about the schedule, um, basically, um, you know, that's, that can be, that's fluid, that can be changed at any time. A little bit about the, the four-year contract. The, the grant that I got is for four years. The first three years, the federal government picks up half of the salary and all, and half of the benefits for the particular officer that would end up working here. The other half would be picked up by the town. During those three years, uh, what we do, unless the town decides they wanted to do it a different way, uh, we have to buy a vehicle, and we have to buy some equipment. So basically, uh, we use those three years, work with the town, to get what has to be gotten, so that then on the fourth year, when the town ends up picking up the full salary and benefit of the officer, the equipment's already bought and paid for, and it's in place, and you don't have to go back there again. As, as the selectmen mentioned, the fourth year, the town would, would pick that up, and then I would, I would like to think, as in the other towns that we have this program in, I'm, I'm optimistic that if you choose to go down this road, um, I don't think it'll be a question on the fifth year, it'll just be a, a question of putting the money issue on the article for that year's town meeting, because I think, um, I, I know, uh, the towns that have it currently like it. We've got one town that's in their ninth year, we've got another one that's in eight, we have one that's in their second year. At Parsonsville, we're eight years, this is our eighth year with RSU 57 also. So, uh, that's kind of the whole thing in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Because we're taping it, if you'd come up to the podium, uh, we're gonna try and get this out on Monday, so everybody will have, uh, two weeks to look at what's happened here tonight before the vote. So if you have any questions, come on up here.
Hi, my name's Bob Anderson. You had mentioned about buying the, the PD. Now, what happens maintenance-wise, or if it gets damaged, or told about who pays for that again, to replace?
The, um, the contract, in the contract that the town would, uh, would sign, uh, part of the agreement is that the county is self-insured, so what happens, the town buys the vehicle, the town pays for the vehicle. The vehicle is, would be, would be registered and titled to the county. The county insurance, uh, for the vehicle would cover that, as well as police professional, and that's, uh, that's all in the contract that, uh, that the town would be signing. At the end of, of the use of the vehicle, generally, we can go five years, sometimes six. I generally like to trade vehicles somewhere in the 130 to 140 area. It's an emergency vehicle, once you get a vehicle with that many miles, it, it's probably time to, to move on. So at that point in time, it, it's the town's vehicle, or in this particular case, if the town of Acton decided to do something with Chapley, it would be both towns, and, and you'd own half of that. Now, we've, we've changed vehicles in some of the other towns that, uh, that we have contracts with. I generally go to the selectmen and say, what would you like to do? In one case, I can remember, uh, the code enforcement officer got the car. In another case, uh, the fire chief got the car. Another case, uh, they wanted to use it to trade in toward another vehicle. So, it's, it's the town's vehicle, it's, it's whatever would happen. The other thing too, you talked about crashing and everything, knock on wood, we've, we've only crashed one of our contract cars, and it's just like if it was your vehicle, the insurance paid off what it was. I, I replaced the vehicle with a vehicle that had basically the similar amount of mileage on it, and we just continued on, and, uh, that was about it.
I have a couple of more questions, if you don't mind. We contract now to you and the state for patrol out here, right?
What, you, no, you, you-
In other words, three months with you, three months with the state police?
Yeah, it's not a contract. The, the way it is, by statute, Title 30A, basically says that the sheriff sets the, the amount of patrol that will be in a town that does not have an organized police department. The state police doesn't have that, but what we've done, because they don't have the manpower, nor do I to do all of it, so what we did is, is between the two agencies, we came up with this particular agreement. So, that's, that's how we did it.
But the town pays for it, isn't it? And the budget that we pay?
We don't pay separately, it's, it's included in our county tax.
It's all part of the county. Okay, it is part of the county tax.
There's no separate thing where we pay the police, it, it's included in the county tax.
Your, your county tax for police coverage for the year is about 13% of what you pay for the total county tax. I'd tell you it's big.
No, that's all right, I just knew that the town was contributing to the state and sheriffs now.
Yeah, the town of Acton, in, in the taxes that you pay for the, to the county, you pay $38,000 a year for 24/7/365.
Now, how do we get 24/7 out of that? I mentioned that before.
We're on call all the time.
Oh, you're on call, but they're not physically here when you say that though?
Right, that's right.
They're still only gonna be 40s hours a week, and it's gonna be split, split between Chapley and us?
If that's the, the way you choose to do it.
So otherwise, it'll cost us-
No, no, what he's saying is that figure is what we're paying right now for an on-call police officer.
Right, but if we hire him then, uh, if we share with Chapley, it would still be $30,000 over three years, or $60,000 if Chapley doesn't want to get into it. Is that correct?
It would be $20,000 a year, so it'd be $60,000 for the three years, and then $40,000 the fourth year. Or if, if Chapley, if Chapley gets, if that's if Chapley gets in with it. If they don't get in with us and the town votes to go for the full amount, it's $40,000 each year, and then $80,000 the fourth year.
So if we contract this, does that mean that the taxes that we pay for the state troopers and all, is that still gonna be in effect?
Yes, we'll still be charged that.
So we're still gonna have two patrols then, basically?
We'll still have coverage from the state police and the sheriff's department that way, but what he's saying is, if we take this, uh, community service, uh, person, then we won't have the state police taking one month, every other month. We'll have sheriff every month, and he's gonna have a sheriff in the Chapley Acton area 24/7.
So that'll be true, basically, but no state police would be coming out then?
Well, they, they can if they'd like. I mean, I, I, if they, if they wanted to come, I mean, just because we do, what happens right now with the, with the call sharing agreement we have, is everything happens at dispatch. If there's a call in the town of Acton, 911, what is your emergency? Bad accident at the intersection over here. Well, if it's, if it's September, and I'm covering C-zone, which is part of Acton, I also have five other towns that I'm covering besides Acton, but if it's my turn to do it, wherever my closest guy is, that's the guy I gotta bring. If it's the following month, then it would be the state police, and they, they handle a third of it, so they'd have probably five towns, so wherever their closest guy was, that person would come to cover that. If we do this, the dispatches would dispatch us automatically, because we'd be covering the town full-time. Now, if the state police wanted to come up here and were traffic, or if the state police got a call up here that somebody wanted them to come, by all means, I mean, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell them they can't. And, yeah, they would come up. So it's not, it's not that we closed the door to them from coming up, it's the fact that you know that somebody's gonna be concentrating on your town and Chapley, if that's the way it goes, 24 hours a day.
And if something happens next door, would they respond? Say a serious accident in Lebanon, and they request the sheriffs, would he respond because he's the closest one around?
The, there's, in the contract, there's a clause in there, it's just like the fire department have for mutual aid, this is an emergency response, if there's a, if there's a bona fide emergency and, and your deputy was on, he would go to that scene to secure it until the next deputy got there to, to replace him, and then the contract would come back. He wouldn't take that call, he'd just be there, just like the fire department does, then come back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That $38,000 we paid for the county also pays for the county jail, correct?
No.
That's, that's something separate? Okay.
About Resika. Why would we want to have an officer and share with another town? I don't have anything against Chapley, but it's such a large area, you know, we're such a large area, um, how are you gonna benefit if, uh, or Chapley, if you, somebody's down in that corner, and there's a call up in the other end to Chapley, um, you don't get a fast response?
Well, you would get, you would get a better response than you do now-
Right, exactly.
Because there'd be only two towns instead of five, and that person may be down the Liman area, you know, for all I know, it's, it's hard to, to tell. As far as, as the agreement between the two towns, that's between the, the two boards of selectmen, and, uh, they've been discussing that, we can do it whichever way the, the towns want to do it.
And if Acton chooses, they can be on their own and still take benefit of this, um, If Acton decides to go on their own without Chapley?
I, I think-
If the first vote is gonna be whether we do it jointly, if both towns vote yes, then we're gonna do it jointly. If one town votes not to do it, then the other town will do it on their own. The way it's set up right now is, we're gonna try and get it to do it jointly.
Thank you.
I, I might also, and this may help answer your question also, the other thing that the contract would allow is if, if both towns during the course of, of the contract period, that four-year period, if, say for instance, during the summer, you wanted to increase that, that main coverage, you can do that. There's a, there's a clause in the contract that allows us to do that, so we could do that if the, if the board of selectmen from both towns wanted to do that.
Hi, Mary Stanton. I just wanted to know if we're doing this because there's been a rash of burglaries or something going on, you know, with the police? Is there something going on that I don't know about?
The- Wow. That, uh, that'd almost be like a soap opera, wouldn't it? I've been in this business for 39 years. I'm from the, I'm from the town of Sanford, and I started my career when, if, if a night out on patrol, if you heard a radio call for an armed robbery, say, in, in the next town up, everybody within hearing distance would, would take off and head for there, because that call was, was something totally out of the ordinary. It never happened back in those days. This time, the way we are now, York County is the fastest-growing county in the state. The, the coverage that, that I have to provide to the 14 towns without police departments is 522 square miles, 50,000 people, and I do that with 24 patrol deputies. Four of those are detectives. Last year, we covered 25,000 calls in those 14 towns, uh, the state police, I think, right around 6,000. So, you know, we're talking over 30,000 calls in 14 towns. Now, you look at the town of Sanford, look at the town of Bitterford, you know, their square mileage is, is not even close to what we cover, and the, uh, the amount of people in Sanford's, what, 21, 2,000, Bitterford's about 23. Sanford has 47 patrol officers, Bitterford has 48 and eight detectives. So, obviously, if, uh, if you take a look at what is now going on, uh, if that call comes in today of an armed robbery, probably we had one the day before, and it's almost, and unfortunately, it's almost one of those things that it's becoming more, you know, the, the norm. We've had a lot of burglaries up in this area, and unfortunately, the, the problem that we have in this society today is, and I'll give it in a general way, we are addicted to opiates, and we're stealing from people, we're holding people up, we're robbing banks, we're robbing, uh, pharmacies to help support a drug habit that this society has. And that's why, uh, we're just trying to tread water and trying to keep moving forward. And that's why a program like this helps, uh, so that we can keep a handle on what's going on. I can tell you, um, that we've bought heroin in this town, we've bought cocaine in this town, uh, and we've done a lot of other things in this town, and we have information about a lot of things that happen in this town, no different than any other, but unfortunately, we have growing pains in this county, and the more people that we start stacking in this county, the more of these issues that we end up having. that we start stacking in this county, the more of these issues that we end up having. So that's, I guess, the, the Reader's Digest part of the answer.
If anybody else has a question, so we can make it go quicker, come on right up and wait up here.
Hi, Robert Kelly. I've spoken to you on the phone.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. My concern is this, is you have the state police one month and you have the sheriff's deputies the other month. They're not sharing information, as far as I can tell.
Well, I, I, I have to question you there because I can tell you that at least once a week, I have two troopers at my office talking with my deputies on different issues.
Okay, well, I, I wasn't aware of this. Because depending on the time of night I call or who I speak to, I get one answer from one person, and I may get somebody that's totally uncooperative another time. And I just, I'm looking for some type of consistency, and I know that, you know, that you, you guys are, let's say, spread thin. And I would really like to have a full-time deputy because it's not just, like, the drugs and everything like that, it's about people driving wrong, it's about the utility companies or whatever, or the tree companies that come in here on these minor roads that aren't the major highways, that aren't doing the proper safety on the roads, that, I guess, CMP contracts or whatever, and you guys don't have time to respond to these things. But if I'm driving, I don't have time to make all these phone calls either. But even just on the way over here tonight, I'm coming down H Road and some guy passes me. I don't even know if that road you're supposed to even, if it's legal to even pass. But I was going thirty-five, forty miles an hour, and it was totally unnecessary. If the guy's in that much of a rush, then he should have left earlier. And I got his license plate number. I don't want to make trouble for anyone.
Do you have a question about the community service officer?
Yes, but, but that was, that was the whole thing. You know, I wanted to know as far as the policing and everything like that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you, if you read the paper the other day or not, but...
No, I didn't.
You know, we arrested an individual the other day on a marijuana grow in one of the other towns, and basically it involved my agency, the state police, MDEA, and ATF. We have an ATF agent that has been working with us because a lot of the burglaries we've had have been involving firearms being stolen and sending them down to Massachusetts, trading them for, for drugs. So that's what we talk about all the time. Once a month, we get every department, there are fifteen organized police departments in, in York County, we get those fifteen departments, their deputies, or deputies, detectives, to come to my office, and they have a, a sharing group. They generally have lunch and everything. The other thing that we also do is my crime lab at the office. Those fifteen agencies have access to that and use it all the time. So we, we definitely work well with all the agencies.
No, I understand that. I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
But the thing with me is I live down one of the not-town-maintained roads, seventy miles from my nearest neighbor. I've called on the state police and the sheriff's deputies before, and I have no problem working with them, and the state police have been very kind to me, but I'm down there all by myself and sometimes with my...
I was a state trooper for twenty-three years, and I retired.
Yeah, I mean, I have great respect for law enforcement, you know, but not everybody is as accommodating as, you know, and I don't think that they should have to come out for nuisance things as well, but I really think we could really use the full-time deputy.
Thank you.
I have two questions. I just want to know if the time in court will take away from the forty hours that the man works? And my husband asked me to ask what happens to the money on any speeding tickets. Does the town get it? Does it go to the state? Any kind of revenue on this?
Answer to question number one, if, if your officer during the time that he's not on shift gets called into court, I pay for that. If he gets called into court when he's on shift, he'll have to go to court, and I, I pay for that also. As far as the question about the money, we, county government in the state of Maine, municipal government in the state of Maine, does not get a dime for any tickets, any speeding tickets or any motor vehicle tickets that are issued out here. I mean, I know we've all heard, you know, sometime people say, gee, have you got your quota yet and all that? Just doesn't work that way. We don't get a dime out of it. The state police get about forty percent because the money from fines for speeding and so on and so forth goes to the state, and it goes to the transportation, and the state police budget, forty percent of their budget is funded through transportation. So, you're welcome.
But they can be funded through ordinances, all right?
Yeah, yeah. You might tell your husband. If, one of the things by having a contract also, currently as it is now, we're not able to enforce town ordinances, nor is the state police, because we just can't, the law doesn't allow it. However, if we have a contract with you, we can, and at that point in time, if there was a, a violation of an ordinance and the deputy wrote a ticket, that ticket would come over here and the town would get that. For instance, in Waterboro, our contract deputy has a parking ticket books, and primarily, it's more of a nuisance-type thing that he tries to control, especially down around the Ospey, little Ospey area. People just, early on, like to park wherever they wanted to, so Waterboro had, had passed an ordinance as far as parking goes. So he'll, he'll, once in a while, if he's going through, if he sees somebody, you know, you can't park there, he'll move them along, but if somebody's been warned before and decide they want to park there again, chances are they're probably going to get a ticket. So money from ordinances or money from a parking ticket would come back to the town.
Sheriff, how are you?
I'm fine.
I'm Richard Nass. Nice to see you again. So I'm somewhat ambivalent about this resident deputy thing. I'm enthused. I could get more enthused if I knew what he was going to be doing, he or she was going to be doing, and where they take direction from.
They, they will be working with the town on issues that the town feel are issues for the town. For instance, our contract deputy in, in Arundel, just recently, the Eastern Trails portion has gone through the Arundel area, and it crosses right down in a real low area of Limerick Road, and people kind of drive through there pretty fast. There's a parking issue over there, there's a site issue over there. One of the things that, that the town said that they wanted to, to get a handle on was that particular issue. So the contract deputy spends some of his time working traffic in that area, visibility. He spends some time with the road commissioner, working on parking and everything. Spent time with the people from Eastern Trails as far as marking things, cleaning things. That's one of the things that they wanted him to do. One of the other things that came up, there was a daycare center on a certain road in Arundel. Public Safety Committee got a bunch of information about that. He sat down, he meets with them, sat down with them, and they said, gee, there's a lot going on by that. So he, he works in maybe half an hour, forty-five minutes of his time. He's in that area. Also, one of the concerns is, is traffic in the morning, traffic in the afternoon. So what the town asked me to do was change his hours. Instead of an eight-hour shift, they wanted to get the before and the after, so we changed his hours to a ten-hour shift. So, I mean, those are some of the things, that's...
Is it clear in your mind when you've got a person, a contract deputy, working for two towns, you have two boards of selectmen? How this is going to work? I mean, are you comfortable taking direction from two boards? I mean, it's not day-to-day stuff.
At the end of the day, in that contract, at the end of the day, it, it lands on me. However, I have to run for this position every four years, and, and the people that sit out here are the ones that determine how good a job I do. So it's up to me to make sure that I do a good job in, in the both towns, if that's the way it goes. Because if I don't, obviously, I can pay the penalty, but I have, I have no problems sitting down, and it's all about communication. Because, you know, it may be, it may be one board saying, you know, let's, let's run radar four hours a day. Well, instead of running radar four hours a day, let's bring my radar trailer out, let's set it up for sixteen hours a day, and then let's take a look at the information that comes out of it. We'll probably figure out that between seven-thirty and quarter past eight is when the highest volume of, of violations are, so we're only using that deputy now for forty-five minutes instead of using him for the whole day, trying to figure out what's going on.
So your sense is that I have a, a weighted as contract deputy through the selectmen? If I have a complaint about police matters...
No, no. You, you, you would not be calling the selectmen on any calls, you would be calling us.
I mean, in general. I mean, more traffic, less, you know, what's he doing? That kind of, that would be through the selectmen to you.
What, what happens, and, and again, in the contract, we, we have him go to the selectmen's meetings once a month in, in the towns that we're in now because that's what they'd like. One of the towns, the town of Leamington, for instance, they, they chose to use one hour a month, one, two hours a month, I think it is, two hours before the, the scheduled selectmen's meeting to have the contract deputy there at Town Hall. He has a little office there, and he's there for two hours. People in the town know that. They can come in and talk to him directly, one-on-one, nobody around, door closed, whatever it may be. That's one of the things that, that they asked for.
I have two more questions. One, any of your resource people working, or any of your contract deputies working as school resource people too? I mean, we have school problems, not necessarily in this town, that could absorb a contract deputy, in my opinion.
We, we have a contract with RSU fifty-seven, and we have had that for...
But that Waterboro contract deputy is not in the school. Is that...
Yes, he is.
He is?
He is. That's all he does. As a matter of fact, this summer, they had a students' academy that he, with the school resource officer from Wells and the school resource officer from Sanford, had these kids, that they did an, an actual police academy with them. I spoke to that particular group. Interesting bunch of kids. They were dressed in, in the, the regular uniforms that a, that a, a boot officer would, and great program. That's what RSU fifty-seven wanted us to do during the summer, plus rewriting operational plans and...
Is RSU fifty-seven paying for this contract deputy?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so it's different than the Waterboro contract deputy?
That's correct.
Different, two different people. So that Waterboro contract deputy is not in the schools?
That's correct.
Thank you. Number two question, what about motorcycles? Are your deputies equipped to deal with motorcycle noise?
Yes.
They are? They can, because they're all supposed to be stickered now. They can stop and arrest for noise.
Correct, exactly.
Thank you.
Well, we have a noise ordinance too, so if we have a fine for that, then they can enforce that.
Hi, I'm Peter Baxter. Very good presentation. I want to ask you a couple of questions to see if I understood what you said. Thirty-nine years in law enforcement, is that what I heard you say?
Correct.
Did I hear you talk about increase in drug activity and crime in this area in your experience over the years?
You did.
I didn't hear you say it was going down, I heard you say it was going up, right?
That's correct.
Isn't that related to the increase in population we have here?
Pardon?
It's, it's related to the increase in population here?
Yes.
Right? And the activities that go on at some of the nightclubs or nightbars around here, correct? Yes?
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
I'm not, I'm not downgrading the buzz, I'm just saying it attracts more people to the area.
The more people you have in an area, the, the opportunity for, for more increase in, in crime.
Did you also, did I also hear you say that you're, you, it's obvious you focus to as best you can, but you're, you're stretched pretty thin, aren't you?
Yeah.
Unless I misread that math, this sounds like a pretty good deal financially. Am I correct? Most of the funding is going to come from a grant?
Correct.
Right? Okay. So what we can get here is better protection, which I think you're going to say we need. Yes? That's your opinion?
That's my opinion.
For pretty short money. Real short money from the math I just did in my head back there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Last question. What would you say our actual level of security is here based on what we should have? Thirty-nine years' experience, if, if budget wasn't an issue, what would you like to see in a community this size?
Well, there's a formula that the Department of Justice has, and in rural, in a rural setting, it goes one-point-eight officers per thousand. Given what we have for, for population in those fourteen towns that have no law enforcement agency, and given the number of people, I should have ninety-four patrol deputies.
And we have how many?
I have twenty on the road.
Okay. I can still do math in my head. Good presentation, thank you.
Anybody else?
Norm Lambert. Two easy questions. The vehicle and other equipment, that's all included in the twenty thousand dollars a year, gasoline, oil, maintenance, so on and so...
Yeah, we do our own maintenance.
Okay.
Correct.
My second comment to echo this gentleman here, twenty thousand dollars a year is cheap money for what you're going to offer for forty hours a week. So regularly, regularly, a patrolman gets fifty thousand a year, maybe, with overtime and all? Not just SO, but PD, so on and so forth?
Yeah, it's a little bit more than that because the, the benefits also.
Right, exactly.
You have to figure the benefits. The salary and the benefits, and it's a little difficult to answer because it all depends on who the officer is, how many years' experience he is, what level of pay scale is he on, is he, is he, I say he, is he or she, is he or she single? Is he or she, what do they have for benefits? Is it a family plan? I mean, there, there's some variables, but, you know, somewhere, somewhere between seventy and, and eighty would, would take care of the whole thing. Salary and benefits average, probably closer to seventy-five.
And just a comment, a positive comment, I hope. Again, you'll have greater visibility, you'll have a, you have a car on the road, basically forty hours a week, both in Chapley and in Acton. More visibility, the better it is. People will slow down perhaps a little bit more?
That, that's part of it also, and that's why it's so important not to lock in to a regular schedule either.
And then, again, through the fire department, you respond, it'd be a lot quicker for you to respond with us.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, as far as the fire department goes too, we, we depend a lot on those guys too. They bail us out a lot. Because, I mean, a lot of times, we're coming from, from somewhere way beyond here, and the guys are talking back and forth with the fire department, and, you know, they'll call us, you know, there's no PI, is it okay if we move the vehicle out? Can we start a wrecker? And thank God they do that for us because if they didn't, somebody would be sitting there for quite a bit of time till we get there, so, yeah.
And we thank you for what you do for us as well. Thank you.
Two-way street.
Along with that, the other night at Chapley, you mentioned that the deputies would be first responders and could answer ambulance calls too.
If, if, if that's what the towns wanted, one of the towns that we had obviously had a, a part-time ambulance service, didn't, wasn't manned full-time, they asked me if, if we could get the officer at least basic EMT so that if there was a call and he was on duty, we could roll him over to give, to give your EMS people a hand, whether it's a lift or, or at least get there to secure the scene till, till your paramedics and everything got there, and then obviously they'd take over, but we've done that before in the past, and, and that's, that's worked quite well too, so.
And I, I may...
Can you hang on for just a minute? Is there anybody else that hasn't asked a question that would like to come up?
Because I'd like, I need to move it along to the fire department because we've got to spend some time there. Nobody else? Okay, go ahead.
The only question that I forgot to ask was, and maybe I missed it, what the cost of the police vehicle is approximately?
About twenty-two.
Okay, and that's fully equipped?
Yeah, and what hap, what'll happen with that? I think I mentioned in, in my earlier presentation, the first three years that, that you have the grant, that, that the federal government's kicking the money in, what, what the county has done and what... money in, what the county has done, and what we'd be willing to do, is we've purchased the vehicle and then divided the cost of it over a three-year period, along with the other equipment. General Motors has a real good plan for public safety. It's about two percent, if I remember right, and at the end of three years, you own the vehicle for a dollar. So what the county's done for other towns that we have a contract, they'll purchase the vehicle so we have it on the go, and then every year, it's a third of it, and that's figured into the money that we're talking about here tonight.
Oh, beautiful then. Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's nobody else, I'd like to thank you, Sheriff.
Welcome.
And also, I believe the selectmen from Chapley are here, Chair Ruth Hamm, Mike Perrow, and Mark Cobb. I'd like to thank you guys for coming over. All right. So, thank you. Let's move on to the fire department. All right, Article five, to see if the town will, one, appropriate a sum not to exceed four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a new fire truck, the purchase price of which shall not exceed four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Two, authorize the treasurer and the majority of the board of selectmen to issue general obligation securities in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed three-hundred thousand dollars to fund such appropriation. Three, authorize the treasurer and the majority of the board of selectmen to negotiate all necessary terms and conditions of said obligation and execute all required documents so long as the term of the obligation does not exceed five years and the annual rate of interest does not exceed four percent. And four, appropriate a sum of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars from the Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund to fund such purchase and associated debt service. Okay, so you'd like to...
Yeah, my name is Peter Smith, the fire chief, Town of Acton. We're here looking for the monies that Chief Holt had asked almost three years ago now. Because we knew we had a fire truck that was coming up, and very bad shape, matter of fact, we've already replaced the fire truck that we wanted to replace with a used fire truck. Unfortunately, for that replacement, at a house fire we had in April, working house fire, it ended up blowing the motor right during the middle of the fire, so it didn't last quite as long as we had hoped, having that used fire truck. So we're trying to proceed forward with purchasing a new one that we all knew that we definitely needed, because our last fire truck was a nineteen-eighty-eight, and we ended up purchasing a used one, it was an eighty-six, but it was refurbished. Even after being refurbished, we didn't get a long, long-term out of it, so that's where we stand now. Been doing a lot of studying of fire apparatus stuff, there's a lot of fire apparatus out there. Our main objective, obviously, is to get a good truck, because we're going to keep this truck for twenty-five years, that's generally what we keep a truck for. Some of the things out there, obviously, you can buy a fire, you can buy an inexpensive fire truck, but you can see the different sizes and metals. I don't want to talk into brands necessarily tonight, because we're still going through the process, so, but we are working on a different brands. I'll actually want to handle around those, so people can see the differences.
These are sections of a cab of a fire truck, both the same position in the cab. You can take the lighter one and bend it in your hands. We're going to have six people in the cab, so we'd like to get a safe cab. We want them all to come home.
Another thing, just showing off, is the difference in fire trucks is for footing and stepping areas. You know, you have some that's just a general diamond plate, and you have some that stamp them. Yes, that costs a little more, but, you know, especially in the winter time, it keeps your footing, it just handles around. The plumbing and the pump, for stainless steel plumbing, instead of the regular galvanized plumbing, again, a twenty-five-year truck, we don't want to be spending lots of money after the fact trying to fix and repair all the issues, try to buy it right the first time. And same with, again, not talking brands, but, you know, this is a body crossmember, so you've got thickness, you know, you pay, you get what you pay for, and we're just trying to do the right truck the first time around for a twenty-five, maybe even a third year plan. Bill, I mentioned a six-man cab. You asked, well, do you guys roll out of the station with a six-man all the time? I can honestly say we don't. We are a volunteer department. It's getting tougher and tougher with people can't leave in their work during the day to go to calls. The self-employment people around, because times is tough, there's not as many self-employment that leaves their job anymore. The purpose of the six-man cab is mostly for rehabbing when we're at the fire scenes. In the middle of the winter, we have a place to go in and thaw out, we can thaw the firemen out, thaw out their gear and equipment. In the summertime, when you're out there and you're battling fire, heat exhaustions, we get them in the cab, six men in the cab at a time, get them in the AC and get them cooled off. I'd love to give you the stats that we have from previous years of rolling out of the station with the five-man cab that we have now. Unfortunately, our computer system had crashed, so all our documentation over the years is gone, on computer. We have it written down, but we're putting it back in really slowly. The backup to the backup failed, and we lost all the documentation, so I will be able to give that to you at some point. Right now, we currently have been, well, I won't say without a fire truck, thanks to Town of Chapley. Chapley kind of bailed us out because we are limited with fire trucks. Went out for service, we ended up borrowing a fire truck from Chapley. I got it lined up to borrow one from Lebanon as well, and we've already responded to calls with the Chapley Fire Region, we did have it. Matter of fact, in the beginning, the selectman, Bill Shields' house, I'm Chapley here, it's like, well, it's the best I could do. They let me borrow a truck, so that's all I had. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Either, Bill Catanze, he's the engineer to the department, he's also been the chair of the committee. We've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, it seems like hundreds of hours in the air, but we do have hundreds of hours on, like I say, going through all these documentations Any questions from anybody?
Any questions, come on up.
Is it a foreign truck or a US-made?
Want to answer that engineer? Is it a foreign truck?
Absolutely. All US-made truck. We've looked at ten different suppliers of trucks. We went down to a show in Springfield, Mass., and actually, you know, kicked tires, crawled into compartments, talked to salespeople, and I sent a spec out to all of the companies that we were interested in, ten of them, that manufacture fire trucks in the US. And for the last month, the entire month of August, every Wednesday and Thursday night, we had a different manufacturer at the fire station, and we literally, those sessions took four to five hours every night, whether at six-thirty, and some of us didn't get home till after eleven-thirty, two nights a week for the whole month. And, you know, the typical package is over ninety-four, ninety-five pages, and, I mean, just going through them and making sure everything lines up and we get the proper equipment on the truck for what we want to do. So there's a lot of time spent on it, and I think Bill will attest to that because he spent a lot of it with us.
We've got to thank Bill for that.
Hi, Mary Stanton. I was just wondering what the cab or the engine part is? Is it like an International or a Ford or what?
Nope, they're usually specific fire trucks, KME, HME, Pierce.
And then, so how long would it take to put it all together? It takes quite a while, right?
Quite a while, it's two to three hundred days, depending. And one of the things we've been trying to do with all these companies as they come in, is if we sign a contract, you'll give us a loaner truck, not the brandy-new one, but something, until your truck comes off the line. And we've got various responses from the companies. They're all willing to work with us, but some of them, it costs a little more than others.
Anybody else?
If I can add into this, yeah, I was the chief at the time when the truck you have now was purchased. It was purchased on a two-to-four-year plan, we're at year three of that plan. So at this point in time, we would have been looking towards purchasing a new truck. The untimely breakdown of this truck kind of expedited it, due to the fact that it's, what, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred days to get a truck made, is kind of why we're pushing this through at this point in time, rather than waiting till the July or the June town meeting. At that point in time, you'd be looking at 2014, before this truck would see the light of the station. This truck was purchased, the truck that broke down, because it was purchased, used, the total purchase price for that truck and the second truck that was got at the same time, by the time everything was all paid off and the other trucks were traded or sold outright, was fifty-one hundred. We just recently got done, I won't say battling, but negotiating with the insurance company on this particular truck. The insurance company's going to total this truck out because the breakdown it had, it was a catastrophic engine failure, and it happened due to an accident that the truck occurred. The front axle actually came in contact with the oil pan, unbeknownst to any of us, and it, of course, stopped the engine from getting oil, full oil, all the time, so, you know, that wasn't known until the breakdown. The insurance company is going to settle on the truck for a little over eight thousand dollars. If you take the fifty-one hundred that we paid for the both trucks, minus the eight thousand dollars they're going to pay us, we're still at the good by twenty-nine fifty. So, but, you know, that being said, you know, we're not just, the other truck is just not going to go away and not give us anything. You know, we are getting eight thousand dollars, and hopefully a little more from the truck that did break down, and that money, hopefully, will end up back towards the purchase of this truck, so.
Not being a firefighter, why do we need two tankers?
We only have one tanker. We have, it's going to be the second engine. One engine is the primary engine for the majority of the calls, and this engine is set up for primary motor vehicle crashes, and our water source, biggest call volume in Acton is motor vehicle crashes, and also set up for water resource. It's got the large diameter hose on there, and it lays the long lines and sets up at the water hole, because we're not fortunate enough to have those fancy little things coming out of the ground and give us free water. We have to, we have to work hard at getting our water, and it's pretty tricky, because if you have the, you know, people from the city come up, they're very unfamiliar with draft, and they have a real tough time, and we go down and we have water splashing our face down there, because it's too easy to get water, so, that's why we have two engines.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn?
On the public hearing.
I move we adjourn from the public hearing.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, the Warren of Finance is now going to hold their meeting, and then we'll be back as soon as the Warren of Finance is done to have the selectmen meeting to make our recommendations.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out.